Welcome to the June 15, 2015, meeting of the Gaston County Board of Education. I'm Kenny Luce, Chairman of the Board, and to my left is Jeff Ramsey, Vice Chair, at-large Member of the Board. I would like to start from my right and ask each Board Member to introduce themselves.
Lou Dedman, Gastonia Township.
Catherine Roberts, Dallas Township.
Dorothy Guthrie, Gastonia Township.
Ms. Cherry, at-large Member.
Thank you. On behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome everyone here this evening. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance and the prayer, and I would like to recognize Mr. Booker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Please join me in prayer. Oh gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for all the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for the pleasure and joy of watching children graduate. We thank you for just the blessings that you have bestowed on us this past school year and all the protection that you have granted that we are not even aware of. We ask that you be with us tonight as we meet, help to guide our decisions, Lord, lead this Board for the betterment of our community. We just ask that you continue to pour your favor on us as a community. We ask all this in the holy name. Amen. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our next order of business is going to be to adopt the agenda, but I'd like to make one statement before we do that. I would like to thank each and every Board Member here tonight. This past weekend was a very busy weekend. It was a very joyful weekend. We got to see a lot of kids graduate and a lot of kids start a new phase of their life, and I would just like to say thank you, Board Members, for all your participation. Our next order of business is to adopt the agenda, and we have one thing that we need to look at before we do this. We've got a kind of a revision here. On the contract renewal list, on the consent agenda, it's been revised, and everyone has at their place a correct version. We've had some resignations in a couple of things. Also, we have placed all the teachers from Ryan Elementary, and that's a wonderful thing that we've got all that said and done, and all those teachers know where they're going and they can start their new year out early this week and get ready and get things situated. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Ms. Cherry has made the motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Dedman, any discussion? All in favor? And it is unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Booker is next with good news.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Member of the Board. We get to recognize several quality educators tonight. First, we'd like to recognize three of our educators who've been selected to represent Gaston County Schools at the Annual Discovery Education Network Summer Institute. This is an outstanding professional development and networking event that's focused on using technology in classroom. It attracts educators from across the country and all over the world, and the application process to be a part of this is very competitive. Only 120 teachers were chosen, so it's quite an accomplishment for us to have three of the 120 selected. So tonight, I would like to recognize two of our instructional technology facilitators, Teresa Thompson and Lisa Montgomery, and a teacher at Sadler Elementary, Isha Harden, who will spend a week in July at American University in Washington, DC, with other educators who are passionate about technology in the classroom. They'll share their expertise with others and be inspired by what they learn. They'll be able to bring new and innovative ideas back to our schools. The connections they make through this program will provide ongoing opportunities to support our own professional development here in Gaston County. So Ms. Guthrie is there to congratulate these ladies.
I am grateful to Mr. Booker. Our Board Chair and Board colleagues, I couldn't help but notice on the website when asked to present this prestigious certificate to our wonderful facilitators that the Discovery Education Network's website said, and I quote, "is a global community of educators passionate about teaching with digital media." And I know out of 120 that we have three from Gaston County. That says a lot about passion. Let's give them a round of applause. One who's very passionate about technology as well, I am very happy to present you three with this wonderful certificate on behalf of the Board. Isha, hi. Congratulations to you. And Lisa Montgomery, congratulations to you. And Teresa Thompson, congratulations to you. And I know you're in clinical this week, right? I was gonna check you out.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. All right. Slide up slightly to the right. Thank you. Yeah, one more. Can we get home with the families?
And then, ladies, I want you to shake hands with the Board, because your hands can take folk all over the world. Congratulations to you.
Tell them you were a tango for a long time. Congratulations. Congratulations. we know that we're a vital part of economic development, but we also get the vibrancy that economic brings. Georgia Pacific has joined our community, and they have an outstanding dedication to teachers. And tonight, we are very fortunate that we have teachers with us who have applied and been selected as part of the scholarship program from the Georgia Pacific Foundation, where they will get to attend a week-long professional development program. These scholarships recognize our teachers' talents and the difference they make in student lives. These programs often allow, just as we talked about before, for cross-collaboration between our teachers and other teachers, where they bring back new techniques and ideas into their classroom. So tonight, we have with us, from Forest View High School, English teacher Kiana Rivera, Brittany Attnepp, Jessica Harris, Matt Hips, and we actually have a fifth scholarship winner, Phoebe Lawing, who is unable to be with us tonight. And what's important about this scholarship is the Teacher Development Program values these scholarships between $3,000 and $5,000. So that means Georgia Pacific has contributed over $20,000 in professional development to our system. We have with us tonight Amber Stone Street, who is a Human Resources Representative, and also we have the Director of Community Affairs Charmaine Ward, and they're gonna present the plaques to our folks.
I'll get started. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and a special good evening to the Board, to all of the honorees already, and all of our guests that are here, friends and family. We are just so excited to be here and to be supportive of your county and, of course, these amazing teachers. The foundation, we focus on four things: education, environment, entrepreneurship, and enrichment of our communities. But the cornerstone of this is education. Each year, we select a number of teachers that go to one of three different programs: Keystone Institute, which is in Colorado, it's environmental education, which is for a week; Creeks to Coast, which is water education, that's in Atlanta, and is partnered with the Georgia Aquarium; and then finally Founder's Fellowship, which is a week in Washington, DC, and is for government and citizen street. All of these are designed to be experiential, hands-on learning, and so that these teachers will not only learn, get excited by doing and not just reading, come back and be teach the teachers. And the halo effect, we think, is going to be tenfold. So we are very, very excited. We selected 26 teachers this year. It is very competitive, and five of them were from your district. So on behalf of our CEO, Jim Hannan, all of the leadership at the GP Mount Holly Facility, we just wanna say congratulations and present these beautiful certificates. Hopefully you have a great place to put this. Brittany, I wanna make sure I get the right one.
Matthew.
And Matthew.
Jessica.
Jessica. And Kiana. Wonderful. Thank you again for all you do for our students. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Jessica.
I'm the top person. I'm going to present our little certificate. It pales.
Oh, no.
Yes, it does. But then I'm gonna talk about y'all. But on behalf of the Board of Education, we're extremely proud of you. If you need a chaperone, any of y'all, I'll be glad to go. I know Atlanta well, but I'd love to go to Colorado. So, thank you. We can't wait to hear all the good things that y'all learned, or better yet, to see what y'all do in the classrooms and with your teachers. Did I get them right? Let's see, I think I can figure you out. Now, we have a small token thanks to Georgia Pacific. Y'all were great, great partners. We hope that you will stay partners, and we're proud of what we have. Obviously, y'all are too. Thank you. Not even an adequate word, but thank you so very much. On behalf of the Board of Education... I think you oughta show there.
Let's see. Can you see that? Would that be okay?
Perfect.
The gentleman's in. Can you...
It's always a man. It's always a man.
Jessica, thank you.
I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
... on the schedule for you to see because we want you to know that our teachers are going to have exactly what they need to meet the students at their level. On the schedule, you'll also see that we've built in time for students to apply all of these literacy skills that they're going to be working on each and every day. And they're going to do that through engaging science and technology-enhanced lessons. I was able to work with our secondary curriculum facilitator, Tammy Mims, and our great elementary instructional technology facilitators, and they have put together some amazing lessons that are going to support Camp Achieve.
And I get to show you some really cool stuff that we're going to do with technology. In the classrooms, we have iPads and we have Chromebooks. There will be enough Chromebooks for every children, every child to have one-to-one, and at least an iPad for every two to three kits. So we have used a site called BlendSpace. It is a free online site that allows us to house materials. So the instructional technology facilitators broke it down by grade level, and you can see that we've created a site that the students will go to for first, second, and third grade. So since you have a second-grade activity in your hands, hopefully you still are holding those chocolate chips, we are going to take a look at what it looks like for second grade. So the second-grade students would click on, say, Week 1. And this is what BlendSpace looks like. It works beautifully, no matter what device the students are on. We know they're going to be on Chromebooks, and they know we're going to be on iPads. So there's a variety of activities for them to do that are totally integrated with the lessons that Tammy Mims provided for the science piece. So there are videos. We've included auditory instructions for the students, so we know that some of them are struggling readers, so we want to make sure that they can click on and listen to us, explain what their activities will be. We've included discovery education materials in as well. So even the articles in discovery education that we have pulled will be read aloud to the students. And there's tons of different interactive activities. We've also pulled in our Google accounts for students, where they will make copies of materials that will go straight into their Google Docs account, and they will interact on the Chromebook or the iPad with the activities. So here's just one example. During each week, the students will also have an opportunity to work with iPads. So we have included lots of different strategies. We've included some even art, so we're really looking at STEAM instead of STEM. For example, we have found some really cool rap songs for matter, and the students will listen to that. They will draw a picture of the lyrics and then put it together to make the paper slide video. For the iPads, we're going to do some app smashing every single week, and some of you have attended a couple of our app smashing activities. So we're going to pull that in, Miss Guthrie, to do some activities with them, so they'll be using the iPad each week, saving their work. And by the end of the four weeks, the students will walk away with the video that they've created on the iPad that explains all the wonderful things that they have learned in science.
So one hour each day, students will participate in hands-on, science-inquiry-based learning. At each grade level, specific standards were chosen that will provide students with unique learning opportunities. First-grade students will learn about the concept of push and pull. Second-grade students will learn about the states of matter. And third-grade students will learn about plants. Teachers have been provided with day-by-day lesson outlines and materials to provide these hands-on inquiry-based lessons. In addition, the science learning time will incorporate interactive notebooking as a measure for students to connect and extend their literacy skills to other content areas and other learning environments. I have here examples. I forgot to bring them. Interactive notebooks. If you wish to see for yourself, I can bring them out of the car for you if you would like for me to show you an example of what an interactive notebook looks like. It is an effort for students to write, record, draw, explain, journal what their learning experiences are all about. Each student will leave summer camp at the end of July with their own science notebook as evidence of their learning experiences. Now, at the beginning of our presentation, I asked you to hold a baggie of chocolate chips between your hands. Hopefully, you've noticed that your chocolate chips changed from a solid to a liquid. Should have melted. In this lesson, students would have been asked to record their observations of the solid before the experiment. You'll see a copy of that observation sheet in your folder that students would be provided with. Then they would record their observation of the liquid after two minutes of holding the chocolate between their hands. Then they would put it in the freezer, and then they would record those observations as well on their observation sheet. Finally, students would journal what they learned from this experiment. Notice that during this activity, students would be exposed to hands-on learning, inquiry learning, reading, writing, listening, and speaking. In addition, other skills are being reinforced, such as organization of their own learning by putting the graphic organizer in their interactive notebooks. In this activity, students not only learn about solids and liquids, but how matter can change from one state to another. I don't know if you want to eat your chocolate now, but you're welcome to. As you can see, students will be engaged the entire day. Each day they are in summer camp through lessons that incorporate a variety of literacy skills, science skills, and technology skills. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you our collaborative efforts to make Camp Achieve happen. At this time, we would entertain any questions that you might have.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Booker. Thomas, will you pull the notebook up again, please, that just shows the grade choices? I want to say thank you to the Board of Education because it's supposed to just say "third grade" there. And through your work with us and curriculum instruction and professional development technology, we are serving first, second, and third grade. And that's a huge step forward. Read to achieve only requires us to address the third grade. So that's where you're saying we're a school system, and so I just wanted to recognize that and thank you for that, and they did a great job of being an example.
Yes, Mr. Beatt.
Oh, that's a great presentation. I ate my chocolate. I thought somebody gave it to me beforehand. I'd like two questions. How many students are going to be involved in this, and where is it going to be held? And the third thing, you mentioned that students got to share iPads. Why couldn't we borrow iPads from high schools and let these elementary kids use them so that everybody has their own iPad?
Mr. Cook, do you have numbers?
I do. Mr. Depp, we are happy to report that at this point, we've got almost 13 hundred students who have signed up to participate in the eight sites that will be offering. Those eight sites are all Title I schools and strategically located for our...
So we're doing transportation, too, for those kids, good?
Sure.
And to answer the iPad question, we're bringing in all the iPads that we have. We just have more Chromebooks than iPads.
Yes, Ms. Cherry.
Mr. Cook, do we have a limit on how many students we're able to take?
Right now, we're waiting for the feedback on third grade. We're waiting to get those test results so we'll know who's actually eligible. And our testing and counting devices are verifying those numbers so we'll know exactly. But at this point, we're able to take all those that are eligible, and then even some who are kind of on that borderline, if you will. So we don't have a maximum right now. We have enough teachers, which we're really concerned about, but the teachers have really come through and want to participate, so we're excited.
Good. Thank you.
How user-friendly is BlendSpace to those parents whose children are at home who may want to participate in the summer activities online?
BlendSpace is cross-platform. That means it will work on any device as long as it's connected to the Internet. So it'll work on phones, iPods, iPads, Android devices, Chromebooks, computers, what have you.
So we could share this information with parents in the community as well? Is that what we're hearing?
We can, except for the discovery education piece. They have to be a student in our school system to be able to access that part.
Right, only for those students that are in the school system.
Yes, ma'am.
But I want to tell you that I actually didn't hold my chocolate the way that I should have, because each time you told me something that you were doing really awed me. And I pressed down because I was extremely pleased and excited to hear the work, the collaboration, and communication that you actually put into your summer reading camp. And I want you to know that, just as I said earlier when I talked about the Discovery Network, you truly are passionate about teaching with digital media, and we certainly appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Cherry.
To add on to what Ms. Guthrie's saying is, I appreciate the diversity of this. We know what our goal is, is to get these children up to par on their reading, but it looks like there is a wide range of activities that's going to keep them engaged, and we know that the goals are going to be met. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I plan to visit the sites. I won't bring my iPad. I'll just read a story.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is the Curriculum and Instruction Committee Report, and I'll ask Mr. Collier to start off with the... The instruct... No, excuse me, the curriculum. I'm sorry.
Operations.
I'm sorry. I'm getting operations mixed up. Thank you, Ms. Guthrie.
Ms. Roberts is going to...
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie.
Thank you.
The Curriculum and Instructional Committee met June 1st preceding the work session that we had. Committee members present were our Chair, Doc Guthrie, Doc Cherry, Jeff Ramsey, and myself. Highlights of the committee meeting included our discussion of the 10-point grading scale and the possibility of expanding this to grades K through 8 in Gaston County, as the state has adopted this for grades 9 through 12, beginning next school year. The committee heard reports from the Curriculum and Instructional staff members regarding this possibility. This topic was also brought to the full board our last meeting for discussion. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee made the recommendation for implementation of expanding the 10-point grading scale for grades 3 through 8 to be in alignment with grades 9 through 12 for the 2015-2016 school year. This recommendation for approval is on the consent agenda for tonight. Honorable criteria were presented and discussed. Grading practices guidelines for each level, elementary, middle, and high school, were also discussed by the committee, and an update on summer reading programs and camps in elementary schools for the summer were shared, as we just heard. These are the key items as we discussed during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Any questions? Well, I think we went over most of that stuff our last meeting. Now I'll recognize Mr. Collier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The members on our committee are Mr. Lee Dedman, Mr. Chris Howell, and Mr. Mark Upchurch, and myself. Also in attendance of our meeting was Mr. Mark Up... Well, Mark Holler, and I was trying to think. Gary Hoskins was also present. As I reported in our last meeting, there are a lot of projects that have started today, and we are very, very busy with a lot of projects, as I mentioned. And I don't know how many of you happened to walk in the building after graduation Saturday morning, but I was at East Gaston, and as soon as East Gaston's graduation was over, teachers were moving chairs out into trailers. The classrooms on the whole first floor were all being moved out of classrooms. I mean, kids were still out there taking selfies and pictures, and chairs were being moved out of classrooms. It was happening that fast. So heads off to whoever puts the logistics for all that work. It is quite an undertaking to get those floors ready. But in our meeting, our update just tells us that the architects for both the new schools are working very hard, and we're anxiously waiting to see where they are with the site development, to see if the plans that they have will work on those sites. And in our meeting, we also discussed the naming of school facilities, and each board member was sent a copy of our current process, and that is up for you guys all to look at, and we would like any input from any of the board members of any recommendations of any kind of changes to those. We will be discussing this further this summer, and we will not meet again because of summer schedules until July the 27th here at the boardroom at 4:30, and anyone is welcome to attend. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Any questions for Mr. Collier at this time? All right, seeing no questions, we'll move along. The next item on the agenda is the Gaston College Board of Trustees' appointment. That's Mr. James Reagan. He will be appointed for a four-year period. We had discussion on this at our last meeting, and I will need that put in a form of a motion. Ms. Cherry has made the motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Guthrie have made the second. Any discussion or comments? Seeing no comments or discussion, all in favor?
I understand.
Okay. Thank you. The next item would be Mr. Gary Hoskins, who will discuss our interim budget that we will need to have a motion, and we'll have to pass the interim budget until we get a final budget for the next year.
Good evening, Chairman Lutz, Vice Chairman Ramsey, members of the board, Superintendent Booker. I would like to just give a brief update on the budget calendar, a budget update on where we are and what's happened since we talked last, and then present the interim budget for fiscal year 2015-2016 for your approval. The budget calendar, we've been talking about this for about six months, so we're starting to come to the end, hopefully. Today, we will be presenting the interim budget for your approval. Sometime in July or August, the General Assembly and the Governor will approve the state budget, and then we have scheduled September 21st as when we will approve and adopt our final budget resolution. With the budget update, we talked a couple weeks ago about the Governor's version of the budget and the House version of the budget. The one thing that was outstanding was the Senate version of the budget, and about an hour before the meeting, they've released their version. So I've looked at it briefly. They're going to present this June 15th, or sometime the week of June 15th, for approval. But some of the things that are in that budget is very similar to the House budget. If you recall, the... I'm sorry, the Governor's budget. The Governor's budget had about a 2.5% increase. The House budget had about a 6% increase. So they're about a 2.3%, as best I can tell right now. So this does include raises for beginning teachers from $33,000 a year to $35,000 a year, and it also includes an increase in funding for increased student population, what they call ADM growth. So those are both positives. But we will be looking and going through those numbers over the next several days and try to figure out. But what's going to happen now is the House and the Senate will form a conference committee to resolve any differences that they have in their budget proposals. The current state budget does expire June 30th, so they will have to adopt a short-term resolution if they don't have that done in time. And then hopefully, July, August, as soon as possible, they will pass the final budget and have it signed by the Governor. On the local budget side, since we talked last on June 9th, the county commissioners did approve the local budget. Local funding for operations remained flat at $43.8 million. Local funding for capital also remained flat at $1.2 million. But keep in mind, when we talked about our budget request, we requested $9.5 million more in operating funding. A lot of that was mandatory increases, or some of that was mandatory increases in retirement expenses, healthcare expenses, et cetera. So that will total over $100,000. So we're going to have the same dollar amount that we had this current year, but it'll have less purchasing power. And finally, the interim budget. We are requesting approval of an interim budget, as we do every time about this... Every year about this time. It will amount to 80% of our existing budget, and also it will include, as you requested in our budget request to the county, up to $1 million of fund balance that will be used for improving our local certified employee or teacher salary supplements. And again, we'll have the final budget approval to you, hopefully sometime in September. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hoskins. Any questions for Mr. Hoskins?
I do have a question.
Okay, Ms. Guthrie.
Mr. Hoskins, I ask this all the time because it's so vital to classroom instruction. Did you see anything in the budget regarding teacher assistants?
Well, there's three different budgets. So it's all over the board. Some of them, a lot of funding is moving from lottery funding to general funding. I think some people have it reduced, some have it increased. So we're going to have to wait and see how that committee between the House and the Senate sort of work that out. Certainly, we're hopeful that it will, at worst, remain flat and hopefully increase, but we'll just have to see how the committee members work through that.
Are we okay here in Gaston as far as retaining our TAs?
The current allotment of TAs, yes, ma'am.
Great.
Mr. Howell?
Mr. Hoskins, the $1 million from the fund balance to help our teachers, would that be a supplement increase, or would that be some type of bonus? Because supplement increase is something we got to try to maintain, or we got to cut next year if we don't have it, or a bonus would not be... Clarification on that point?
Right. We are currently presenting that as a supplement increase.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Ramsey.
To follow up on that same address on the supplement, in the county commissioner's budget, do any match any of that $1 million?
No. Other than that, last year, they matched, I think...
1%.
60...
1.5%.
$60,000. That's also included in this year's budget because they didn't decrease what we received last year. So that's all that they had done.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Howell?
Mr. Booker, back to my question on that increase, on the $1 million. Is it good business? And I'm just asking for point of clear. Is it good business to put out a supplement increase with a $1 million kicker from our fund balance if we can't do it next year to pull it back so that ultimately, at the end of the year, we slap the teachers with a, you're getting a reduction in pay versus giving them a bonus and saying, hey, here's some type of bonus, whatever we're legally allowed to call that, so that it doesn't look like something we're taking back next year? I'm struggling with passing this interim budget and raise my hand for it, depending on the wording of that phrase.
A couple answers, Mr. Howell. You are correct. We would like to look at any additional payment we would do to be a one-time payment. We did in working through the budget and how we had current allocations, identify a way that we could fund up to almost $800,000 of this through existing operations. Now, for us, the disappointing part of that is, if you'll recall, last year when we did the 3% raise, it amounts to about $25 to the average teacher's supplement. So while this number looks large, to the average teacher's supplement, it'll be about 10% on just the supplement, so it'll be less than $100 on average to the person, but it's a step that we're trying to make. So I can say with confidence that we're fine passing the interim budget tonight, recognizing that, because we have a lot of folks on 12-month payment plan, and we need to implement it with July 1st. We should be able to move forward. If you want to do a larger payment, more substantial, that would be where we'd be looking at the bonus for the future, but we have the ability to do this step this year.
Okay. Any other questions? I will need this in a form of a motion. Mr. Collier?
I second.
Ms. Guthrie made the second. Any more discussion or questions, Ms.?
Can we clarify the motion? Can we make the motion?
This is...
No, we're...
Okay, Mr. Hoskins, you want to...
Sir, we are recommending that we adopt an interim budget, which includes 80% of the funding that we received this year for the interim budget, plus up to $1 million for the certified employee or teacher salary supplement increase for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Hoskins. Mr. Collier made the motion, and Ms. Guthrie made the second. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Hoskins.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is alternative accountability model. Ms. Mattson is coming up, and I think she's bringing Sheila Clifford and Derek Jackson with her.
Good evening, Chairman Lutz, Board of Education members, and Superintendent Booker. Each year about this time, we have to present an alternative accountability model. This is the current model we're using with Webb Street and Warlick, and I would like Mrs. Sheila Clifford, our current Director of Testing, to present this to you.
Good evening, Chairman Lutz, Superintendent Booker, and School Board members. The alternative accountability model was developed to provide accountability information for eligible schools in lieu of a school performance grade, and the State Board of Education provides the eligibility components. We do have two schools that are currently eligible for the alternative model, and as Ms. Mattson said, that's Warlick Academy and Webb Street School. We currently are operating during this 14-15 school year under option C, and we're recommending tonight that we continue to operate under option C, which is the alternative model for these schools, again, in lieu of the school performance grade that the regular schools participate in. And so, thank you, and Chairman Lutz. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions? This is an action item, so I will need that in a form of a motion, but we'll entertain questions or discussion after we get a motion. Mr. Ramsey has made the motion. Ms. Cherry has seconded. Now, is there any questions or discussion? Seeing no... Yes, Ms. Cherry?
Obviously, we've had tremendous success staying with this model.
Yes, ma'am, and we have operated under... These two schools with alternative models historically. Yes, ma'am.
What are the downsides of it?
Well...
If any.
I don't particularly see a downside. The other option, again, would be to do the A through F that the regular schools are operating under.
Okay.
I'm going to ask for a vote in just one more second, but I wanted to make a statement, but while Ms. Clifford was still standing there, she couldn't run away. We would like to congratulate you on your retirement. We hope you enjoy it. You're going to be sorely missed.
Thank you.
But we do appreciate everything you've brought to Gaston County over 30 years, and we do appreciate you. Now, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much, and we do appreciate you.
Thank you.
The next item is the consent agenda, and I'd just like to make one statement before we move forward with a motion. Before we started, we gave you an updated or revised list of the contracts and the hires and everything. We had a couple additional resignations, and this is the reason why you've got an updated list. Also, we were allowed to place some teachers from Ryan, so they know exactly where they're going. So we're glad that we got to do that this time, and so they can get started knowing where they're going to be next year and everything. With saying that, the consent agenda is on the board, and that is in a form of a... I will need that in the form of a motion. Mr. Collier has made the motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Cherry has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion or questions concerning the consent agenda? All in favor? Mr. Howell, you negative, or did you raise your hand?
Negative.
All right. The last thing or the next thing will be the superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. A couple things about actions tonight. As Mr. Hoskins was talking about the budget, another thing that I know the Operations Committee has asked staff to start working on related to the capital side is to look at our high schools and the current physical... schools and the current physical condition of the athletic facilities and support, particularly thinking about the group with Hunter Huss that you all have spoken with. And so, we'll be looking to bring a report that's comprehensive to talk about all of those as we come back for the start of school and we get our final budget. The accountability model, we appreciate you approving that. That's just, allows us to operate those schools and truly give them credit. We'd love to be able to have alternate accountability models for all of our schools to take into account what we believe a true measurement of those schools are, but we will continue to play by the rules as defined. And we are very excited, and Mr. Lutz, you thanked the board earlier, I wanted to thank you all. Great attendance at numerous graduations last week. Webb Street, Warlick, and then all day Saturday, and I really appreciate the support of that. 2,172 seniors received high school diplomas. And what is very impressive is over $43 million of scholarship was earned by that class. That's an impressive number for all of us to know. I personally had the opportunity to attend both Forest View and Highland on Saturday, and the board members who participated there. It's just great to watch that and see the pure joy of children as they get their diplomas and recognize it's just a first step in the rest of their lives. So, again, thank you for that. Today was a great day for our administrators. They were all brought together to just kind of culminate the year and talk about the year, our accomplishments, and then to start planning for the next of the year. Mr. Debon and Ms. Guthrie both attended for portions of it, and I just appreciate the support, and I know our administrators appreciate that. Again, thank you for the reading program and your support of that. We saw great things go on last summer with just our third graders, and to be able to offer that to first and second graders. If we don't address our literacy issues, we're not going to be able to address all our other issues, and so that support greatly appreciated. And we do start today as the beginning of the summer hours for the district office in all of our schools. So that minute, 7 o'clock this morning, everybody was here with their bright, shiny faces, and they were here until 6:00 PM. But on Fridays, we are closed. That is part of, back to our earlier budget reduction issues. And so, I just wanted to remind everybody, on Friday, the phones do ring a lot, so I appreciate that. And with that, I would request a closed session for personnel.
Mr. Lutz, can I make one comment quickly?
Yes, sir.
I just thought it was really interesting that our seniors get $43 million, and we can only get $48 million from our commissioners. We might want to involve our seniors in helping run our school system.
And, Mr. Debon, that's a great, I also wanted to point out, you still have two folks in the audience. All of you know Cynthia Howell, who's pulling a Yemen's job in Personnel right now, and also Dr. Kim Maddox, has, she attended our leadership conference today and has been in the district the last couple of days. And so, we just welcome her to the part of the team.
And may I say one thing, please?
Yes, Ms. Guthrie.
I certainly enjoyed all of the graduations, but I will never sit beside Board member Catherine Roberts again. She cried the entire time.
You should have seen me island.
And I just want to make a comment on commending our superintendent and all our staff. What a wonderful day for Saturday. There's a lot of moving parts out there in our county for Saturday, and it goes off like a hitch every time, and it's a great celebration, and I just appreciate everyone for their hard work on a hot day.
Very hot day. Mr. Collier?
Mr. Lutz, I'd like to make the motion to go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, paragraph A6 for Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Ramsey has made a second. All in favor? That is unanimous.[1159.58]